Yeah, he was out. We were at Havel Shelby and Jeff Henderson. And him and Bubba Conrad and Gray Meeks and a bunch of them sitting at the table together. All of them went to school together. Yeah. Conrad, Denny Slatter.
Yeah.
You know, all of them sitting there and Jones.
Good. Well, they used to be out with Ray, Ray, who's been friends.
Yeah. I started talking to him about it. I thought they asked him. Yeah.
I can't wait to get my hat and my straw. Hey! I say you must have been really busy.
Uh, we, we pretty soon.
Did we, uh, get any garbage?
Yes, and did you see the letter, the email that we got? That lady, I mean, she wasn't so bad about that, but I mean, you can't blame her. Right?
Ask Ray, and she said it was possible she's getting it. So we can.
Yeah, well, um, that's what it is now, um, for me, I think.
Not only in the last couple of weeks, I have that note.
I do too, yeah.
But Ray said, she said earlier, um, she said that most of what she was getting, maybe you can't.
And that was that email, well, the email was out, we're not keeping up with that. That's not good.
Yeah, I noticed that.
I don't know how to do this.
Is he on track?
He's in there.
How, uh, how did you figure that?
I think, I think same thing. We just, all that time, they were trying to get the car. Paul just started going. My little.
She just does. Get outside and try to do it. It was still floating. My back full.
We separated just that and ended up in a, oh, I remember a few more.
The way.
First day.
I thought, I said, you know.
Probably.
I mean, you.
Isn't it a happy, sweet, beautiful day? It's, um, a ruin that you give. Oh, my God. And, and, and. Okay, that's right. Um. You gotta love this stuff.
You could say she probably, but I have not.
Well, this is more than two years. It's basically all I, all I know is.
You're smart.
I wouldn't have. I don't know. I don't know. Sounds like, put it better, you know, makes more sense now. You don't.
And saving France. And the letters picture, and he said those, that was last year. So I was like, okay, then. She said, oh, yes. I had saved it. Um, so she was asking me. Yes, and I gave them all a.
First thing.
Yep. Yep, yep. Were you sure? Excuse me?
All my things. Thank you. You got another bill? I used to sell everything.
Yes, yes. Now they pay you for six, seven, I don't know what it's paying. Have you been paid?
I paid. All my things. Thank you. You got another bill? I used to sell everything.
Yes, yes. And it's.
Now they've.
I'm.
I'm.
I'm. I didn't. I didn't.
And I said it.
But I didn't. That's. Right then, too. Yeah.
Start over. They want to do that, then I was. I said, why?
I told you. Yeah. You were, I guess they're.
Yeah. I was telling you this. I just want you to.
I'm.
Joseph, when you stay with me. You guys. You know.
So the guy.
So. 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 Oh, you're saying you find you consist.
So. Okay, okay. And those. Yes, yes. Hello. What is he doing? Okay. He don't. Yeah. He came. He came to help me. I'm sorry. Yesterday.
So.
So. So. Yeah. Yes, yes. Yes. Yeah. I need to add all their stuff. So I need to. Okay. I'll probably add that next afternoon. I'll probably change it. Hi. He talks, he talks today. He said he's going to be here. I have. He's. He's. He told me he talked to you. He said he's going to be here. I have. Yes, I need to add all their stuff. So I need to do. Okay. I'll probably add that next afternoon. I'll probably change it. Yeah. Hi. How are you, please? He talked, he talked today. He said he's going to be here. I have. Yes, I have. You tell. Yeah, I was. Thomas said. Yes, I was.
Got the wiki.
That's exactly what I was. I was. 360. Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I don't do that. I'm good, how are you? This is. We don't. We don't.
My son actually, he came to. I. We used to have a fair amount of people that would come. They, they got some. He told, he told. I didn't. Fair amount. I was. Wouldn't try to get some. So generally, not many. It was first. It's. I have. I do not. So far, for Lee, it's only.
I'll talk to you about all of that. Somebody already come over. But what we're trying to do is just call this. Hey, we got it. Where can you get your. We're here to get your. We know where. But.
Hi, Ernie.
Hello, bud. Hey, dude.
Hey.
How are you? You know, it's always. I'm. I'm. Yeah. Been a while. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. I heard the. Yeah. 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 Well, I heard the. I'm not. Yeah, they got. Yes, all that's on. Yeah. I did all of the level. I did the best. They were. Yeah. They came one of them. I've got two. They're ladies without. Ladies.
Yeah. 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 That's. 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 Please.
He used to. Everybody.
That time's bad. I don't watch that. Please call.
He's so.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. 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 Okay. 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 Yeah. Warrior. She owned. 360 feet. Yeah. Yeah. But she's coming. I need to get like she. I forgot. I forgot. It's just the control contract.
Yep. I'll be able to.
It was just. You were a little. Thanks, Major. I'm. I haven't talked to you. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know.
All right, we'll call the April 4th, 10th, 15th, Commissioned Work Session Award. We've got one guest tonight, Miss Katie Green, fight regional child advocacy.
April, and it's Charlie's wearing his month, and he's always coming through to all. Thank you for the support throughout the year and just all the great communication and partnership we have throughout the county. And I'm just going to. Hey, Monday, they'll just come here to visit this April. I'm not coming after the money. Last time.
This is the one time you can see us around.
Yeah, no, no, it's not. But, yeah, you guys have any questions or want to know anything?
If you see kid wheels out there.
Yeah.
You know, all that's for child abuse awareness month, just explain a little bit about that.
So what we're doing, our pinwheel gardens, we're doing those again this year. So I know, I believe Chick Chick has some out. Sure they can trust. And one of the new pediatric offices across the road that have some. But, yeah, you can purchase individually, you can purchase packages, whatever case may be. But the idea is the pinwheel is a symbol of happy, healthy childhoods. So that's just helping us to raise the brand of community that we're here. We also did t-shirts and we added hats this year, and people just like our t-shirts. So it's fun, right? And all the funds come back to us, and all of our services are free of charge. So everyone that helps. And we're currently getting some paint, so you guys can come on and see the paint. You're welcome to see the new upgrades. And then, of course, the city of Troy did a great job helping us with our renovations this, in the year, first of this year. That's, that's going to go on, too.
Anything else? Any more questions?
Thanks.
Well, we, uh, we do have a proclamation for you guys in recognition of April leading the child abuse prevention month. So if you want to, will come and present and.
I'm going to take it with two cameras to go. You're good. One, two, three. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
You know, I saw you standing there just trying to get out of chairs. All right, um, he's here.
Got a few things I wanted to get on your agenda. The, we have some new business. I'd like to use some funds, some reimbursement for trucks, equipment, and personnel from the Federal Highway for emergency repair work. We had some of this money budgeted, forecasted to be in this budget, as you can see here in the paper. And I have some leftover funds. And until they come in and we don't, we don't really try to pin them down for anything until we know we give them, because they can change their mind and decide that what we have on there, they don't want paper this, or they don't want paper that. So we have some leftover funds that we finally have gotten in this money from Federal Highway, and I'd like to use it to purchase some new trucks with the apartment. And then, maybe we want to make one change here on this. Instead of the, I got one new Chevrolet 2500 and an F-150. I think I want to make it, okay, two 2500s. I'm getting 2500 at the same price as the F-150, so might as well get another vehicle that can be passed down. Proximate price. So I'd like to maybe do that. And then one surplus truck from out off, the Everduty Diesel Pickup Truck Works, off their surplus lot. And they have some available. They've got one, a few available right now, but they really didn't, we didn't like the selection that they had. But they got like 20 something listed as upcoming to come. So I'd like to get approval to purchase some new trucks with that money. Also, I have one ER claim that hasn't been paid yet, because it was one that was done later, and it'll already be paid at 820. But it should be another 45, uh, $5,400 coming in. And that actually should take away the need for me to, to use surplus property or the other fund I have here to make a difference. It should fill that whole void.
Does this surplus, any of the other trucks that you're running now?
Yes. In lieu of that, I want to surplus, if approved, I'd like to surplus three vehicles, 994X4.
Oh, yes.
And then two Dodge, we've got two Dodge flatbed trucks. Same air models, same engines, same problem. They've already had three engines put in on them, and both of them are sitting out on the lot right now, need another. So that particular truck, for some reason, that engine doesn't want to hold up to what we do with these vehicles. I'd like to. To maybe be able to bring our, keep our car in, it's all those trucks. Continue our eyes.
So if you don't try these, you know, just, um, can you handle the, the, the flash drives?
Yeah, they, they were most likely to idle the engine. Because they have flat beds on them. Really good to use for farms, things like that. And for other people who aren't going to use them in the same manner we do. Part of the problem, from what my mechanic's telling me, this engine doesn't like to sit and idle very much. And then, idle a little bit, northern, has a problem coming oil up the top engine. This engine is not very good for some of the things that we use it for. But, yeah, we think they would go fair. You know, maybe not as close as they would with any engine, but I don't think it'd be worth putting an engine in them, so.
Okay. Now, I just wanted to see your condition. You're going to help us. Okay.
The third item I have is, we know we've got a problem at the railroad crossing near your town on 4430. I think another recent accident there a month or two ago. And we'd like to, we feel like that is a good candidate for us to change some things, from a yield sign to a stop sign. And then, you know, we've kind of avoided spending the extra money for flash LED signs, but for this instance, I think it would be an excellent use for us to put a flash LED stop sign there at that traffic. So.
So we got, we're putting on the strip some of the flashing yield sign. And so if we, if we put a flash and stop sign, then that we can only do what we can do, but if you think it's really going to stop.
I hope, I think you'll have a better chance than just a yield. The problem we seem to see with, with people with yield signs is they'll slow down, or they're really, they don't slow down enough. And we're going to, actually, I'm going to raise the height to the normal strips. We're going to make sure that they should say sure enough how they're there.
So last time, I mean, this obviously is not the crossarm.
No, sir. This would just be, and then just put the stop signs, LED stop signs up so they can see. The traffic. Yeah, I think we got a crossarm. Just the crossarm word was like 350, 380, somewhere in that range.
Yeah.
So I, I would like to try this first before we take that, you know, to that next step and see if this will help. The accident. That's all the new business I have. I do have one current business. I have one individual who needs to file for the FEMA declaration. And they're due to have surgery next Monday, I believe, on her hand. And her may be out for a short extended period of time. So they requested the FEMA. Present that. And that's, that's all I have about this.
Questions for the engineer? I know we talked a little bit today, but give us all an update on sort of where we are with the county.
I don't have maybe a percentage of where we're at. We, we've been working pretty diligently, other than when it rained Thursday, Thursday night kind of beat us out of Friday. But we were steadily working. That was even unexpected. I mean, we were continuing to work up through Thursday. Ready, ready. Look out for one motor driver that's down right this minute. I do not know what the issue is with it. I didn't get it updated from the shop. But I've got one down, the other two are running wide open. And then we've got our two tractors with the road losses on it still, still going every day. Could be slowed down. We're 90, 95% or better complete with, with the storm debris. Complete everything in the tornado pad itself, Elm Street, which we've got to go back and get a little bit of stuff there. But other than that, and after that, we're just going to run Elm Street, pick up trees and limbs that are scattered through most of all of our patrons. So that is free to most all of our help to go back to our borders and to hit our road roads part again. So we're steady into that right now. So we, I'd say a few more weeks, really, before we, we've got some of our roads that we haven't even laned once. You know, because we had so much damage from the snow and rain. But those roads typically are okay, less traveled, but in fair condition. So we're having to go back and hit a lot of the same ones repeatedly right now to keep them passable. So as far as percentage wise, we're still good. I mean, we're, we're making progress, but we're still.
And Ken, is Mr. over here?
I don't know. I haven't talked to him. I've not talked to him. Really, that he doesn't know.
So why don't we talk about this here, since I'm not sure if he's going to be here for the meeting. So I'm sure in about a solid week or a half, we can have all our thresholds to get FEMA declaration, but it's staying tonight. And so we're going to have to, we're trying to clean up, which always hurts our budget. I know, I know we're still working on it, but we're working on estimates for FEMA. Why don't you give us a, um?
We will actually qualify Federal Highway. So even though we didn't make FEMA qualifications, the Federal Highway will pay for debris removal on our major collectors. So if we don't meet FEMA, they actually will pay for it. So right now, I'm probably looking at maybe $250,000, $280,000 to just in debris cleanup that I'll be able to submit to them.
So 6680 is a major collector.
I'm not talking, I was gonna ask where he is at. He's not even helping.
So why don't we talk about this later, then, since I'm not sure if he's gonna leave or if he's leaving. So I'm sure by the summer, week or half, we can have all of our thresholds to get, uh, FEMA declaration, but the state denied, and so we're gonna have to eat the ton of paint up, um, which always hurts our budget. Um, I know, I know we're still working on it, but we'll work some estimates for FEMA. Why don't you give us an idea of?
Um, we will actually qualify for Federal Highway, um, so even though we did make FEMA qualifications, the Federal Highway will pay for debris removal on our major collectors. So if we don't meet FEMA, they actually will pay for it. Um, so right now, I'm probably looking at maybe two-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars for just in debris cleanup that I'll be able to submit to them.
So six-six-eighteens and ninety-four collectors, six-six-thirty-six?
Yes, all of the, the ones that really got hit hard by the tornado itself, uh, for the most part were, um, sixty-six-eighteens, sixty-six-thirty-six, um, Florida, um, Elm Street, um, I need to check on Elm Street, or it might not be, because that part may still be within the city limits, I'm interested in that, but part of it will be. And then, uh, there's like sixty-six-forty, sixty-six-forty-one, the headlights are there on, there were a lot of those, those are not major collectors.
So that, I mean, I was gonna, not, not, when you, when you get your head around it, give us, you can send us a, a memo with email and let us know what we think our estimates of qualifying, what's our problem.
The, after the big rain last Sunday and Monday, our flood issue in Goshen, do you know if all, would go like that was hundred percent that pipe being stopped up or?
Uh, not entirely, that, that problem, now the, the former below there, I think they had the issues, uh, I think a lot of that was just in the sheer volume of rain, and we didn't, didn't help any that the pipe was locked up. Um, Beaker should have stopped up the pipe there on twenty-three oh five, um, outside of the Goshen Channel, um. I honestly don't think it would have been worse, um, or would have been any better especially on them if that pipe was reloaded. I think that water would have got there faster, um, and they would have had a problem, I think the day of, instead of the day after, when we unfollowed the pipe. Um, there's a resident down there, and a fragmentary road is continuing to have problems in Elmore County, every major road, um, where it's, it's kind of backing up into their property. The very end of, um,
It goes back into?
Where it ties back into garbage and everything. Um, and, and I don't really know, there's nothing that we found that we think we can get in there and do some, not on the right way for sure, um, and then what's on the right of property, we haven't, we've had some people kind of walk in, look at, and we don't know that we have a good answer, um, for why it's backing up.
We've got an issue in Goshen that is, uh, over the last ten months, it's seemed to get worse, that it evidently not historically been a flooding problem, but when we get these big rains, it's flooding the county road and then backing all up into, you know, yards, and, uh, Derek, uh, he's talking, he's calling the viewers, you know, RCDS, who else? But we're scared the problem is all of private property, and I need to, well, they get out of it, but we, I don't know, we're limited in our ability to leave the right way, but there was an issue, but the issue is creating the issue on the right way, then the public road, and we'll, we'll, we'll have to pull some other resources in to, uh, mitigate some of this before it becomes a serious huge problem for the county road.
And there's a lot of times we can do, um, like construction easements and things and do work, even sometimes adjacent to the right way, if it's a problem that's caused by, uh, our roadway injury, uh, which means sometimes we can get in and repair that, um, if the landlord gives us, uh, permission to do repairs, but this is, this is not something that, like we think being, you know, is not being caused by the road or by, um, camp property, although we don't know what's causing it.
Anything else for the engineer? Thank you, Derek. Tom, Mr. Brown, didn't think of this much.
We're bored of that.
The commissioner? All right, Daniel, come up off your cellies.
Good evening. So the one thing I know that we have on the agenda is the VAS maintenance service agreement. I think you went up a little to twenty-one nine, twenty-one thousand nine hundred eleven dollars, standing there.
Give us a quick rundown, Mackenzie, if you need to step in and help some of the students, and they've been through fire runs for last month, um, tend to remind everybody what this software and what this agreement is.
So they maintain our ESC controllers, which basically control all of our HVAC on the new judicial complex, the whole courthouse, and this head department. So it gives us an ability, not only to control some of the air conditioning temperatures and, but we can also troubleshoot and see what's going on, so we know whether we need to call a service contractor or someone to come out and look at something. I can tell something, I can tell the water tire's not on, I can tell the spray pump's not on, it's, and a lot of the stuff, there are several things that I, that we can fix in-house without it having to go everywhere, you know, so it's really huge to be able to see it, you know, to be able to address it.
All right, any questions?
I just, everything going good now, it doesn't give us so.
Pidants, um, you know, I've got a couple of units that are off, we had, like, um, we didn't know after, after we had the, uh, flood, um, but there were a total of eight units that would never turn back on.
Okay.
You know, so we've identified it, we got everything turned back on. We've got a couple that are out there waiting on some pumps for that one, and I think we found another issue, and it's a pump as well, so, um.
Fifty thousand, would you give us an update on the, I know we, we got back in, we're still doing the work, and some of the, I mean, it's where we're at on the work, as far as full exploration.
Court runs. Court runs. Everything's good. Um, there's a few small issues here and there that I think have been ongoing with, uh, some lighting and some sambles, we're just addressing that.
Are you ready?
Thank you.
The last thing I do want to mention is I did get some toys on, some generator service with, I'm not, I'm just gonna throw it out there, we'll introduce it on the next one, um, the next meeting. The annual service, it's in, it's broken down into four parts, this is over four generators for the new complex, and for the road department generator that we get for her. So fifteen hundred dollars is annual service, uh, four hundred dollars for an ex, for a senior annual inspection, and then they do a loadback test, which is important to determine what, you know, what capacity we have with the generators, and they even do a fuel audit. And so it's basically about four thousand dollar here per generator, but we'll put that in next week's, uh, next one, we can get it up on.
How many generators do we have?
We have four over at that complex, but we, we have one that we are borrowing from EMA, they're letting us use it, so if they're giving up another shoe that we might hook it up to the road department, we'll go have some backup during emergencies, and then, um, we're, we have to start. Last thing is, is our workover software's coming along with, um, we're probably, we've got about ninety percent of the work cases in, so hopefully around the middle of May, we'll be rolling down, seeing how everything goes. I believe it's gonna help us a lot.
I'm excited to get into the agency.
It'll be a good thing. You got anything else for me?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next driver.
Just tell you, the best thing ever happened to the facility manager, I just don't know, he's doing a great job and getting a lot of stuff done together together. Um, first of all, the Pike County DHR board appointment, uh, right now, we do know that one appointment is, has asked to come off of the board, and, um, this is an appointment that was made by District Six, so Commissioner Johnson, that one, we're voting him and rule that him work on that. Uh, there may be two other positions that come up on that board, but they'd ask for a little bit more time to find out if those two, uh, want to stay on, to continue their service, or if they would like to come off. So, and it, I think after the twenty-third of this month, they were gonna let us, I was having here, I won't let us know, um, please, and I'll keep you updated on that. Um, so that will roll down the current business. Uh, the second item is the train, uh, VAS maintenance service agreement that, uh, that Danny has already given you an all, an update on. Um, the next item is gonna be, there's a request in a package from the city of Brundage for the use of their electronic voting tag indicators. Uh, this is something that they usually borrow from us, um, during their elections, uh, to tagulate those, the votes with, and they have their own voting machines, but this is what they use to actually tagulate the information when they bring it back in. Um, and Judge Bunn has told them they, they need to request that from us, um, comes in that came from Secretary, uh, Merrill, with the Secretary of State, um, so they're just asking, they're making a formal request for, uh, to be able to use those electronic voting tag indicators, and this can roll down, they're just kind of going ahead and getting ready for the August, uh, I think that's gonna be their first election. Yes, so, um, they're just, that's on there. The next item is the budgeting in that, I have gas tax fund, but I also would like to add sales tax fund, um, I do not have those amendments yet, and we needed to, uh, do a little bit of work before we can have actual amendments that we'd be making the request for. The gas tax fund are what, uh, Derek asked you all for a little bit earlier, if we do, because he's getting additional funds and being able to send money on the equipment, we'll do a budget amendment, because that's a pretty large, it's not until a small, it's a pretty large change in the budget, so we're gonna do an amendment on that. Um, under the, the other one that, that we're coming up, will be, um, sales tax fund, uh, this will be to first of all, cover the asbestos abatement that you all approved at the last meeting, um, we look to use some of the, uh, sales tax funds, those have overall, um, are rule one, what we had budgeted originally, so I think there's some money there to be able to cover that additional cost that gas tax isn't able to cover on that abatement, plus, um, the service agreements, not the train service agreement, because that was what we were expecting, but these service agreements that are for the generator, we're gonna need some funds to cover that. Also, I think there will be another one probably coming to you all, uh, for you sending for, um, those AON units that are at the jail, that we're gonna need a separate service agreement on, because those machines have, have certain computers and software and all that to, to do the servicing on those, so we're working, um, Dan's working on getting some prices on that, so there's gonna be a couple of other things that we need to have service contracts that we did not renew and budget for, and we're gonna need to, to find some funds to pay for that. So we'll bring those back to the, the next meeting, we'll have some, uh, some actual authority for what those amendments will be. Uh, the next item is, uh, Open Meeting Records Act, this is a resolution that pertains to Alabama Act two thousand twenty-four, two seventy-eight. I'm going to be sending you all some more information on this act and, um, the way that some of the law changed and what we need to have in for, uh, open record requests, um, just some information on that. There's, there's, there's been some more standards, I think, that were set through this, um, act that we'll need to, uh, kind of do some adoption policy or resolution on that, so you'll get some more information on that. Um, I'll probably be emailing you this pretty big list of stuff that I've got to give you all on that. Um, and all this will just roll down to current business, I'm not asking for, um, any suspension of rules to, to take action on this stuff tonight. Um, and your current business, um, I don't have anything for action tonight, except for, may possibly have something for the Duane's Cadillac Ranch, I'm waiting on a piece of information, let me see if we've got the right piece of information that we have, we need. Or this, this is what we need, the, uh, pre-publication on this, so that can have action taken on it tonight, uh, the Lowndre Tattle Liquor Class One Duane's Cadillac Ranch, um, in District Four, that can have action taken on it tonight. Um, the only other item is April the twenty-eighth, which is our next scheduling, is a county holiday.
I know, any questions for the next driver?
Could you, when you mentioned, uh, other centers, and I, I know, um, they weren't here yet, but could you, when you, or just email, text me an update on where, uh, where we're, we're asked to, and any other center after, so some tires will go to your range, some things gonna be dealt with, let me know, where that's, those things, please.
Okay.
All right, we will adjourn the work session, we will reconvene at six P.M.